And you're on. You're on cable, we're good to go here.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the Select Board meeting of October 19th, 2020. We have a number of guests this evening, which will be introduced, who will be introduced when the time comes for them to present. And we also have a number of our friends and neighbors from Milis who tuned in. It's an important meeting, so I'm glad to hear that, glad to see a lot of folks have taken the time to participate. To begin, I just will introduce the board members. Myself, I'm Jim McCaffrey, Board Chair. Mr. Pete Germaine is our Vice Chair, and Aaron Underhill is the Clerk of the Board. We make up the Board membership. Also this evening, we have Mr. Trubazinski, our Town Administrator, and Karen Burray, who is the Orchestrator of all of this, our Technology Wizard.
Yeah, definitely.
So, and others will be introduced as they get the opportunity to present. I'd just like to start with a quick announcement this evening, just to remind everybody that as we speak, voting is going on in Milis. Mail-in voting has been progressing, and so mail-in voting opportunities are still available to folks, either through mail-in or filling out your ballot and putting it in the drop box out in front of Town Hall. Actual in-person early voting has also begun in Milis and around the Commonwealth. So, literally, even as we speak, some of your fellow citizens are probably in the Town Hall voting tonight. So, that schedule will continue. You can take a look at the website to determine what hours the Town Clerk's office is open for early voting for the rest of this week. And of course, on November 3rd, we will have in-person voting in the Veterans' Memorial Building for those who want to exercise their right to vote on Election Day, November 3rd. I just want to reassure everybody that a tremendous amount of discussion and planning has gone into this effort, led by the Town Clerk's Office and the election staff. We know it's an interesting time, and we know it's a time that we have a lot of challenges, including public health challenges. The group has worked very hard to make sure that we can provide safe and hopefully smoothly-run election for this season. There's been a joint group that has met, led by the Town Clerk's Office, including Town Administrator, building maintenance folks, the police and fire chiefs, and EMTs, the DPW, the Health Department, all working together to make sure that we can offer the voters of Milis every opportunity to cast their ballot in a safe and reasonable way. So, I just want to call out the fact that that effort is all behind the scenes, and hopefully, everything will go smoothly. Anyone else have an announcement this evening? My other colleagues?
I do not.
Okay, well, then we'll move on. The first item on our agenda tonight is a discussion of drinking water, and including drinking water and some new regulations for PFAS measurement that we are going to be talking about this evening. This is a very important conversation. I just want to outline a little bit of the way we're going to do this tonight to make sure that everyone who is interested gets to hear all the facts and asks any questions that they would like to ask. So, we're going to start the meeting by asking Mr. McKay, Jim McKay, the Director of the DPW, to kick us off, and then to introduce other speakers who will help us run through some information that has been provided to us in advance. The slide deck is on the Town website, if you'd like to take a look at it and follow along. We will make every effort to actually put it on the screen through this Zoom conference as well, so that folks get a chance to read, see the material as being presented. We will ask Mr. McKay to lead the group, the presenters through their presentations. And we're gonna, in order to make sure that we do this and get everything out there, we're going to let the presenters go forward and make their presentation, and we will not have questions while the presentation is going on. We will defer the questions till after the presentation is made. So, as we go through the material, if a question comes to mind, write it down so that you get the opportunity to ask it after the presenters are completed, presentations are completed. After the presentations are completed, I will ask the members of the Board to ask their questions. I will kick that off by deferring to my colleague, Mr. Germaine, who is serving as the Chair of the Enterprise Committee, which includes the Water System, and then ask my colleague, Ms. Underhill, to ask her questions, and then I'll ask mine. After that, I will give the opportunity to folks from DPW or Board of Health and other town officials to ask questions they may have for clarification purposes. And then, after that, we will open it up to conversation and questions from the members of anyone else who is on who would like to ask a question for the presenters. So, that's the way we're going to go about this. It's a very important subject, something that is of interest, you know, across the whole spectrum of our town. So, I'm glad that we have the opportunity to have this conversation tonight, and that we have the opportunity to address your questions tonight, as well as, you know, as the issues unfold. So, with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Jim McKay to kick us off, introduce to us the presentation material, and take us through the presentation. Mr. McKay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, I'd like to thank the Chair and the other Select Board members for convening this meeting early. I know you're very busy, and, you know, I want to thank you for starting this meeting at 6:00, for this very important conversation that we all can have with our fellow Milis residents concerning PFAS. So, I'd like to get into the introductions on who's going to speak today, if I could, so we can move to the next slide. It's myself, I'm the Director of Public Works, and I'm the owner, manager of the system that represents the Select Board and the Water Commissioners. John McVay, the Director of Public Health, Kathleen Lannan, Chair of the Milis Board of Health, Dave Ramachi, Dave is the DPW Superintendent, Ron McKinney, he's the Water and Sewer Superintendent, and Michael Hillary, he's a Water and Sewer Technician. Just a brief explanation on licenses to operate the Milis Water System. Both the three gentlemen that I spoke, they all have D2 and T2. What D2 is, distribution, the distribution is for when the water gets out into the system, and that's mainly directed by the population of the town, and that's set by the Mass DEP. Treatment is for the treatment sources that we have, and we're very well stacked with licensed personnel that know the day-to-day operations. Ron, in his new position as the Water and Sewer Superintendent, will speak, and he will give you a synopsis of the specific well that's in question that we're speaking about tonight. Dave oversees the entire Water and Sewer DPW's operations, and Mike is the technician that actually goes into the wells daily. Just a brief explanation, these wells are tested daily, seven days a week, and if needed, 24 hours a day. We have operations with our new skater system that was in place in the past eight or 10 years. Big differences from the days of when poor Alex was down in the woods at Well 3 with a flashlight, seeing if the wells were working. We've come a long way since that. And that's through the generosity of the previous Select Boards and the residents of Milis to invest into a state-of-the-art skater system that people, that we can operate, again, 24 hours a day on laptops, handheld phones, and iPads. Our consulting engineering from Kleinfelder, Kirsten Ryan, she's a Senior Project Manager, and she will do a presentation on, you know, the testing, when it was started, and where, you know, the last set of testing that was performed. Etsi Frederick is our Senior, the Senior Principal for Kleinfelder. She sees all the projects that Milis oversees. And all these people, including the President, the Select Board, the Town Administrator, Karen, Deidre Gilmore, Marie Gallagher, they've all been very helpful through this process. The PFAS, it was, it came about, I would say, about two or three years ago, we get this newsletter, once, every Friday, we get a newsletter, and PFAS was, for the past two, three years, there's been a something, you know, there's a regulations coming, there's a regulation coming, and finally, the regulation, it came last two Fridays ago. And it's in place, and Milis volunteered for this early testing, and it was through the training of, I, Mike, myself, Ron, and Dave, we all had training on PFAS, you know, where does it, where does this man-made substance come from? And our biggest question is, how did it get into our system? How did it get from Point A to the actual distribution system of the water system? So, we always knew that, you know, with the old GAF plant and the Hermit Shoe Building, we felt that, you know, we should volunteer, and the state was paying for the sampling, and we volunteered, and we did those testings back in May. But we'll get into more in-depth conversation about that. We've had great help from the Mass DEP. Mary Jude Pigsley has been on the phone with us anytime that we needed her. She's the Regional Director for the Mass DEP Central Regional Office. There's not many people that hold the position that she holds, and she's given, hands out her cellphone number, but most importantly, when you call, she answers the phone. And she's been very helpful with us through this process, and I want to thank her. With her tonight is C. Mark Smith. He's a PhD, MS Director, Mass DEP Office of Research and Standards. And Marielle Stone is the Deputy Regional Director for the Bureau of Water Resources. But I believe they're all, I know Mary Jude is the Central Regional Office, and I think the two come out of the Boston Office, but they can clarify that when the time comes. So, the next slide, I'd just briefly like to go over the PFAS website that we created before the actual notification went out. The notification, people, I can't, I don't know why they, everybody didn't get it. I would question the mail carrier, I'm not, because we did pay for a townwide mailing to everyone, businesses, residents, whether you're an apartment owner, if it's a multi-dwelling, we paid for each mailbox to get a delivery of that notification. And so, if you can't find it, it's on the website, if you want to look at it. And we also have a fact sheet, PFAS informational frequently asked questions, that's at the top. I would ask everybody, please take a look at that. It gives a breakdown of the dates of when everything was taken, when we first did the first sampling, and we went on to the, up to the last sampling source in October. I'm sorry, in August. And that's on the, that's all on the website. We have the, what else do we have on that? We have the notification, and the, and all the tester results. We've actually put all the tester results from, from May up until this point. I want to stress one thing before we move any, move forward. Through this process, the regulation does state, and we've, we've chose to adhere to that regulation, that when you have a system or a well that is above that 10 pots per trillion, you need to do that quarterly. Well 3, if you look at it, it's on the website, it's at 13.6, so we are testing that quarterly, those test results. That testing was done last Thursday, and we should receive those results this Thursday, and once we get those results, we'll post it on the website. And if it is over the 20 pots per trillion, there will be another notification that will have to go out, and will notify the public of what are, what we're going to do, how we're going to move forward. If we take three major wells offline, and one and two, when they combine together, in Well 3, that's a good chunk of our source of, of water source. So, we'll have to have deep discussions, you know, when those results come back, but we're hoping that they are below the 20 pots per trillion. And we're going to get into more discussion on what 20 pots per trillion, what does that actually mean, as we get further on. But before we go to the next slide, again, I just want to emphasize that this was a voluntary undertaking. We started in May, we felt it was the best, in the best interest and the safety of Milis residents, and I believe it certainly paid off, because when you look at the May sampling, the, everything was below the 20 pots per trillion, everything, all five wells. And then, we finally tested Well 6, after we did some service on it, and we put that on, back on, they, all six wells were under that. And then, when we received the sample of Well 2, pushing over the distribution of Wells 1 and 2 in the treatment facility, and we finally got that notification in September 3rd, verified count on that, we took the wells offline immediately. So, people are saying, how long did you, if we didn't do that, that testing, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have tested until next April. So, I think it was a great thing that we actually started this testing early on. So, we can go to the next slide, and I'm just going to briefly give an overview of the water system. So, the water system, we have a, the Town of Milis actually has a Water Management Act permit, which is given from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, the Department of Environmental Protection. That was issued to the Town of Milis on February 26, 2010. We were in, as, this January, we were reviewing and updating that permit, but due to COVID, that has not transpired, and we have not moved any further with the DEP on the new issuance of a permit. We will be getting one, I'm sure it's, once their staff are all back, this is going to be one of, because we're one of the only ones in the system that actually has a permit out there from 2010. A lot of things will change in how we're going to move forward with our system, watering bans and stuff like that, but we can get into that another day. We're talking about PFAS. So, the Town of Milis, we have six wells throughout the town. This map shows where they're located. The first wells, 1 and 2, are located at 7 Water Street, and that's in back of the DPW building. If you drive up to the transfer station, if you look to the left, it's that building, the treatment facility is up in the hill, and the two wells are a little further back in the woods. Well number 3 is on Birch, off of Birch Street, and you can see that located, it's pretty well into the woods. It's, it's in there. It's, I'd say about a mile and a half off the road. Well 4 is at South End Pond, and again, when you drive off the road, when you get to the pond, if you go fishing there, that's that building that's in the fenced-in area, that, that's, that's Well Number 4. And Well Number 5 and 6 is the newest well, though it was brought online in the 90s, and that, the treatment facility is on Norfolk Road, and both of the wells are well into the woods, almost in the, I would say, almost in the Medfield Town Line. It's, I would say, it's two and a half miles, or maybe a mile and a half, off of Village Street, that little gate when you drive past where the Tangerini Farms on Village Street, where they have that new field. It's well into the woods there. And Ron's going to get into talking about blending. So, let me just, I'll just go back quickly. So, there are six producing wells, and we have four treatment facilities. We have two wells that blend together. We used the word blend, and Ron will explain a little better, but Wells 1 and 2 come into the treatment facility, they get treated, and there's a, and then they get dispersed into the tree, into the distribution system. Wells 5 and 6, they, again, they both come out of the woods, and they go into the treatment facility, they get the appropriate treatment, and then they also get distributed, distributed into the distribution system, too many distributions. Wells 4 and Wells 3, they just come out, they get treated, and they go into the system. Many questions are asked in the phone calls that I've had, what, what well services me? You know, what area of the well, you know, does 1 and 2, where does that service? The system that we have, when there's a demand for water, no matter where it is, all, whatever wells that are online for that day or that moment, they all go on at the same time. So, to say that people up on, on Middle 6 Street or Orchard Street, where are they getting their water from? Is it coming from, you know, 1 and 2 or Well 4? You know, it's all going to the tanks to service the tanks for the pressure zones. So, we can go to the next slide, and I think Ron's gonna get into, well, this is Wells 1 and 2. These are the, this is the well that, that, in the treatment facility. That's an airstripper that you're looking at, and that airstripper was placed with a grant through the DEP many years ago because of some of the chemicals that made us think of why we, why we should be testing for PFAS, and it came from what we believe is the old Hermit Shoe Building and the Roofing Plant, the GAF plant that produced roof shingles. And not that they're the exact chemical that's, they treat, this airstripper, but they're close enough, in, in, pretty much in the same family. But it does not remove PFAS. This would be the facility with discussions further on with the Town Administrator, the Select Board, and the new committee that was, for the Enterprise Committee, will be discussing through Kleinfelder of what type of treatment we will use if these numbers persist going forward. I can turn it over to Ron, and he's going to explain Wells 1 and 2.
Okay, thank you, Jim. I don't have that much that we can add.
Wendy's going to shut off your voice.
He's an idea.
I gotta.
From the back, tell him who's tipping the drivers.
They won't, Kenny. I'm in the middle of listening to a town meeting about something here, so.
Ron, you're on mute.
I'm on mute.
There we go. Thank you, Jim. I really don't have too much to add to that, except I, you know, we're discussing the water treatment facility, which is located on Water Street, top of the hill next to the DPW. And the facility has two groundwater pumping sources, which are located down back behind the DPW. The two sources are independent of each other, but yet they share the same aquifer. These two sources utilize one transmission line that provides water to the treatment facility, making it a manifold that are blended water supplied to that facility. And then, within the facilities where the injection process happens, and then our sample tap is at the point of entry to the distribution center. And all this happens before the first water consumer's tap. I mean, you pretty much covered a lot that I was going to also say.
Okay. So, we can move on now to, Kirsten's going to take over, and she's going to discuss PFAS and the testing results. Kirsten is our consultant, our main consultant from Kleinfelder, and she's been with us through this whole process.
Thanks, Jim. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I appreciate that overview of the system and how it works. And I just wanted to really quickly highlight a couple of things that you can also find on the frequently asked questions worksheet that's on, or fact sheet that's on the website, and that, some of the things that were in the mailer. You know, we've mentioned PFAS, just a few brief words on what those are, if you're not familiar yet. They do consist of a group of numerous human-made chemicals that have been, you know, in production and use for quite a number of decades, since the 50s, and they are used to manufacture a lot of stain-resistant, water-resistant, and non-stick products, and they're also a very important component in some type of firefighting phones, particularly firefighting phones that are used with high-temperature fires, like aircraft, and things like that. The problem with PFAS is that they, they do not break down easily in the environment. They're very resistant to degrading, and so they tend to persist in the environment, in the soil and water. And there are some health effects associated with PFAS that DEP is going to get into further discussion on, and talk about their regulation, and how they came up with the 20 nanograms per liter. So, that is the new regulation that has been published just a couple weeks ago for 20 nanograms per liter of six PFAS. So, as I said, there's, there's many, many PFAS chemicals. The ones that have the greatest level of concern at this point, whoops, I don't know how I ended up drawing red lines on my screen, suppressed something. But, so, six of these compounds added together have to be below 20 for drinking water. So, this is not a common predicament, I mean, not an uncommon predicament that Milis finds itself in, and there's a number of, over two dozen, community water systems in Massachusetts that also have found levels exceeding 20 in their water systems. So, it's a challenge for, for many communities, and these chemicals are present in very small amounts. And that, one nanogram per liter, just to give folks a sense of scale, is equivalent to a single drop of water in 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools. So, we can detect these compounds to a very low level. The good news, I guess I'll say, is that there are treatment technologies that can remove them to non-detectable levels, and certainly below the 20 nanograms per liter. So, there are several straightforward technologies that are already being employed and designed and constructed around the state and elsewhere to help communities remove them from water. And then, just again, real quickly, wanted to walk through some of the results in Milis's voluntary testing program. As Jim mentioned already, began in April 2020, just knowing that the regulation was coming, deciding to take advantage of DEP's funding support for the testing, which is, it is expensive to collect these tests, about $300 a sample. The test results do take up to four weeks, so, you know, as soon as Milis gets the information back from the lab, which, again, can take anywhere from two, three, four weeks, often, they, you know, are able to take action. So, prior to the August sampling, everything that, all the test results that were taken came back below 20, in some cases, very well below 20. You can see on this graph, Well 6 is the plus sign over on 3, you've got, well, 4 and 5 are also, they're below 10. So, the triangles represent the DeNgelis Plant, which is combining Wells 1 and 2 together into a single sample. So, those are the triangles that you can see that are the higher levels, 17.6 back in April, and then 17.1 back in May. And then, if you look over to the right side of the graph, they call out there, on September 3rd, the samples were reported back to the town, and out of, you know, an abundance of caution, they shut the well off immediately, or sorry, shut the DeNgelis Plant off immediately when they got the results. You can also see another triangle over to the right, 20.9, and that was a confirmation sample. So, even before they had the results of the confirmation sample, you know, Jim and Ron took that action swiftly to, out of an abundance of caution, to turn that well off. So, going forward, the plan is that that plant will stay off, continued testing of the other wells at the same time, looking, you know, to plan ahead for how to, you know, implement treatment. And I think, at this point, that's where DEP will come on. And Mary Jude has a slide shared. Should I stop sharing, I guess?
Yeah, that would be great. It's hanging back and forth.
I'd like to introduce Mary Jude Pigsley, and she is the Director, the Regional Director, Central Regional Office. And again, I don't know if you're on from the beginning of this, I want to thank her for, for her assistance through this process, and the form that was written up, I mean, that was mailed out, the notification that, that went out to the whole Milis residents.
Move your clothes for 11:00 AM on Thursday.
Oh, we got somebody on.
Just a reminder to please mute yourself if you're not the one that's actually speaking. Thank you.
She, she actually wrote this, because, you know, Milis was one of the first ones that, that fell into this category. Once the actual went out, we actually were one of the first ones. And we received that on, on that Monday, we pulled it together, and we got it mailed out on that Wednesday, and people received it Thursday. So, I know Mary Jude wants to do a presentation, so we'll turn it over to her. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the invitation and the ability to join your meeting tonight. I am the Regional Director of the Mass DEP Office for the Central Region. With me tonight are Mark Smith, who is the Director of our Office of Research and Standards in the Boston Office, and Marielle Stone, who is the Deputy Regional Director for all of the water programs, including drinking water, in the Worcester Office with me. So, we've been working the last couple of months with the Town Administrator, with Jim. Jim, and Ron, and Kirsten, and others. And I have to say, the town has been just terrific to work with, especially since this was a voluntary effort before the regulation came into, was finalized. And this was something that we offered to a lot of towns, and not, not everybody took us up on this opportunity. So we have been able to give, I think, a pretty good amount of technical assistance to Meliss, because the sampling is not required for towns the size of Meliss until April. And I think some communities are going to wait until April, and at that point in time, you probably won't have the ability to be as hands-on with them as we have been with Meliss. So it's a, it's a great testament to the, to the town officials and employees that we've been able to get involved so early. And it's great that the town took the actions that the town took in taking the water treatment plant offline, getting the public notice out. And interestingly, because the regulation has only been finalized for two weeks, that public education letter was the first one of that type to go out in the state. So that in itself presented challenges, and we did have a number of, I was trying to get that finalized to get you all the information. I know people are going to have questions. I want to just go through a couple of slides really quickly, and then we can circle back if, if the, the select board has questions and the town officials, and hopefully we'll be able to take all of the questions. And if not, we can certainly have them sent in, and we can get back to, to Jim, or to Zinsky, or the board of health. So Kirsten covered a little bit on what are PFAS, the 15-syllable word. We try to avoid poly and perfluorale alkal substances. There are literally thousands of them. As Kirsten said, they are extremely stable. You might have read about them or heard about them, called forever chemicals. They do not degrade, and some of them are very toxic, which is why we're talking about them in drinking water and talking to Meliss tonight. Common uses of PFAS is, as Kirsten talked about, were some of these different things. We're not supposed to use trade names, but it's not.
Mary Jude, sorry. You're not seeing, we're not seeing a screen. Are you sharing?
Oh, no. Oh, no. I'm seeing my screen. Let me.
If you, if you just do share a screen, it should come up.
I did.
At the bottom, do you see at the bottom where it says share a screen? Should I share my screen? Let me look.
Yeah, multiple screens. I always have trouble with multiple screens.
It might be.
Try this again.
There you go.
Okay. Now I have to back up.
We're seeing the, the present, no, there you go. Now we're good. Yep.
All right, so I didn't get to show you, you didn't see the, the long chain of carbon boring atoms that beat these, it's one of the most indestructible bonds in, in nature, and that's why these are so persistent. So like I was saying, we can't say Scotchgard and Teflon and all of those words, but that's, that's basically what it was. Anything that was waterproof or slippery, nonstick, all of these different uses, and the, the A triple F foam that is used in certain kinds of fires, as Kirsten mentioned, and oil spills, gasoline spills, things like that. The uses that Jim was mentioning, a couple of sites, like shoes and roofing materials, could definitely be things that contained or used PFAS chemicals in them. So why are we talking about PFAS? We have, in the central region, 77 cities and towns, we've been doing PFAS testing with many of them voluntarily. We have 31 systems so far that have had some detectable levels of PFAS in them. And that's not just community systems that are people who drink the water every day. It could be an apartment building, a condominium complex, a wall, things like that as well. Not 31 cities and towns, 31 PFAS throughout this region. The, the reason we started testing, EPA, the federal government, has the Safe Drinking Water Act, and it sets federal standards that states can adopt. And Massachusetts is a delegated state, so we take the EPA rules, and we can have our own rules as well. And under the EPA system, every five years or so, EPA looks at things that are not regulated under what's called the unregulated contaminant monitoring, which is pretty self-explanatory. And they pick maybe 20 chemicals to say, are these things in the environment? Should we look for them? Should we regulate them? So in the most recent round of the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule, PFAS, some PFAS compounds were in that, and that rule applied to public water systems who serve more than 10,000 people. So those were required to test during that round of testing. But other systems were, and we were getting an idea of the prevalence of it. And at the same time, because so many people have been exposed, the statistics are something like 98, 99% of people have been exposed to PFAS that have some levels in their blood in the entire world. So the science is developing incredibly rapidly, all through the United States, all throughout the world, and we've been taking that information in Mark's office, the Office of Research and Standards, looking at all of the toxicological information that has been developed, and what we're seeing in the Commonwealth, and decided that we should regulate, notwithstanding that EPA has not made up its mind yet that Massachusetts is going to regulate these PFAS chemicals, the six that Kirsten talked about. So we went on two different paths. We regulated, the regulation that just came out two weeks ago is for drinking water. And we had also, earlier in the year, January, or maybe December, have a cleanup standard for contaminated sites where the groundwater could potentially be used as drinking water. And they're both the same number, 20 nanograms per liter, which is also 20 parts trillion. And if there are questions about how that all came to be, Mark is certainly the person who can speak at length to that. But the derivation of the standard is based on developing information, and is the most recent information that we have. And that was the decision to go with the 20 parts trillion for six of the PFAS chemicals combined together to reach 20. So the reason that we're concerned about PFAS, and specifically this low level, is the sensitive subgroups for whom very short-term exposure, a matter of months, can actually have potential health consequences. We're looking at the sensitive groups of pregnant women, nursing mothers and infants, and immunocompromised individuals who drink or cook with the water for foods that absorb water, like pasta and rice, in a residential setting. So there are other uses that are of less concern, non-residential water use, someone not in the sensitive group, if you are bathing with it, if you're washing your vegetables with it. If you are concerned whether you're in one of the sensitive subpopulations, or you are just concerned about your drinking water in general, you can certainly drink and cook with bottled water. And Mass DEP has a ton of information on our website, including information about bottled water by companies that voluntarily tested their water, and it has shown not to contain PFAS. There are also options that involve using home water treatment systems. It's a little bit complicated to talk about those. There is a national organization called NSF that certifies water treatment devices. EPA is currently considering regulating. They haven't determined definitely to do that, but only two of the PFAS compounds at a level of 70 parts per trillion for the two added together. So the NSF certifies treatment devices that will get to or below 70 parts per trillion for those two combined. Obviously, Massachusetts is six combined for 20 parts trillion. It doesn't mean those treatment systems would not reduce it to that much, but the certification is only to the EPA number. So just keep that in mind if you are looking at either sink mounted units or treatment systems for your home, if you have a private well and not drinking water, or if you do want to put a faucet based on your house, even if you are on the, on the Meliss water. So Massachusetts is not the only state regulating these. The chart, you can take a look at it. I'll send it to Jim, so you guys can post it on your website. Some are doing something like, we are, Vermont, for example, is 20 for the symbol V compounds. Others, like New Jersey, who recently adopted their drinking water standard, maximum contaminant level, is individual, has standards for individual ones. So there are different ways that different jurisdictions are coming up with this, but Massachusetts is, is one of the most protective. What else are we doing? We developed the drinking water standard and the cleanup standards. We're also offering, as we did with Meliss, to do a first round of testing for people for public water systems all across the state, and also some limited private well sampling that we're just getting off, off the ground. We're trying to work with these communities where we do have exceedances and try to identify where it's coming from. And in Meliss, we have been looking at the GAF factory. We've sent them what's called a request for information to try to figure out what they were using, what may have ended up in the environment. As we said, they persist, so even if something happened 40 years ago, there could be evidence in the environment, and we would like them to investigate about that. We worked with fire departments across the state to inventory any of this A triple F foam that they might have, and we did a take-back program where we paid to have that foam destroyed, so that no one would accidentally use that. And we've been doing a ton of technical assistance. We've been working with our communities, with the public water suppliers, doing education and outreach like this meeting to help people understand what the standard is, why we're regulating it, what they can do. We've been listening to the advocacy team group, to the water supply operators, taking in all of the different positions that people have on this, briefing the legislators, coordinating with everybody. Mark and his team are still learning, still following all the developmental, developing science, and we will be doing training for public water system operators. The rule is actually very complex. Kirsten mentioned getting a confirmatory sample. The rule does require two samples. If you get the first one and you have a detection, you have to take a second one. And the average is what your reported result would be. So there is a time lapse. You take the first sample, it can take three weeks to get the sample back, then you have to take a second one, and that takes three weeks to get back, and then you would be in a position to determine whether you were in compliance with the 20 parts per trillion. So we have a ton of information on our website, and I know there are links on the town's website, and if, if you can't get there, it's super simple. Just Google it, Mass DEP PFAS. It will take you to the page that has all of the information and links to the science of how the standard was developed, the information about the public water, information if you have a private well, and it's updated frequently, goes to Mass, which goes all of the communities that have detections and exceedances. So I would really urge you to look at the town's website, look at our website, not to rely on social media or movies, things like that. The information that we have and is up to date is on our website, and I would really encourage you to look at that. And that is all I have. Stop sharing. There we go. And if, Jim, I don't know if there was anyone to speak after me, but Mark, Mark is, is here somewhere in these squares, although I think his name might be showing as Nancy Lynn, but it really is Mark Smith. And if, if the, if the board has questions, we'd be willing to take those. And if I can't answer it, or Mark, or Marielle can't answer it, we will get back to you with an answer as quick as possible. And thank you again for the ability to, to be here with you tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, before I turn it back over to you, I just, I forgot to, Elena Westwater from Senator Ross's offices also here, attending the meeting. I see a lot of names in the, in the cubicles here that I want to thank the residents, over 25 people that have called in to the office and showed respect in asking questions, and we had long discussions on this issue. And I want to thank them that actually, some, most of the people were fairly, very knowledgeable of the situation, as, you know, John and Kathy, you know, Kathy Lannan, you know, whenever I have an issue of any type of question, I usually go to her first, and she's usually, on any issues to do with water sewer or anything, she's usually spot on, and they've been very helpful through this process. So I think we're done with our pot, and Mr. Chair, if you'd like to take it back over.
Okay. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, folks, for the presentation. As I said at the outset, I'm going to ask for any comments, questions from my colleagues on the board for the initial round, and I will lead it off with the chair of our, select board member, who's the chair of our Enterprise Resource Fund Committee, Mr. Jermaine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of questions, many of which I will not ask this evening. Mary Jude Pigley was very nice about saying she's willing to accept questions, and I will forward them if that's okay with you. But I will ask a few in the evening, just to see if I can get a baseline for some of the information that is of concern to me and perhaps others in the community. I'm interested specifically in what are the lowest levels that have been actually tested with experimental controlled group data on human beings that have been done? All I read in the literature is high levels or basic information, but no specifics. Can you give me what those numbers are?
I'll ask Mark if, if he can speak to that.
Yeah, sure. So this is Mark Smith. I'm the director of the Office of Research and Standards. And yes, I am listed as Nancy Lynn, because I'm on my wife's iPad, because we had some technical issues. But it is really me. Yeah, so the standard is based on a very extensive review of the toxicological data that's available, and that includes data both from humans and also from laboratory animal studies, and some limited mechanistic information about how these compounds exert their toxicity. All of that information, and it's, you know, it's pretty dense, is available in a document that's on our website. It's a technical support document for the, both the MCP standards and also the drinking water standards. So I'd refer you to that for a really deep dive into the toxicology, if you're really interested in that. I'd note that we don't actually do experiments on people. So the exposures to people that we look at are based on occupational types of exposures, which are typically fairly high in the workplace, high in comparison to what you would experience from a drinking water pathway, or from studies of populations of people exposed to things in the environment, like from drinking water. Those studies tend to be fairly statistically less powerful, shall we say, than the studies that we do on laboratory animals, because we can control the exposures and really look in close detail for the health effects. So I don't know that I'm answering your question specifically here as to the lowest levels that have been studied, but we're setting a drinking water standard that is intentionally below the levels at which we have reported effects and seen effects in people. And that's done intentionally to be protective and to acknowledge the statistical uncertainty and the lack of statistical power from the studies that are available on people.
I appreciate that, but I'm going to come back again. I've read a great deal of that literature, and I cannot find specifics that say, at this specific level, we've done some testing, we recognize the numbers. And so I'm saying, what are some of the numbers that you've actually used? For example, I've looked at the El Paso study in some detail. I've looked at the Wisconsin study in some detail. I looked at what Seattle has done. I've looked at a number of other locations. I've looked at what, what is it, ATDSR, or whatever it is, and their studies. And of course, they have and of course, they are very evasive, saying they can't draw any conclusions as yet. They're concerned, but they have drawn no conclusions. So I'm asking, what's the lowest level, with a number, that you're even aware of, in which there are implications? And I understand that laboratory animals have been used, but it is also my knowledge in reading through this, that no laboratory animals, such as chimpanzees or rhesus monkeys, have been used as yet in any of these tests. So I'm just asking, what are the levels that you're aware of, that are the lowest levels that have been tested, that seem to have any negative results?
That have negative results or positive results?
Either way, however you want to do it, what are the numbers, rather than high, low, yeah, we've seen results?
Well, the numbers are, at drinking water exposure levels, at 20 parts per trillion, we have a concern if the concentrations exceed that.
I understand.
Yep.
But how did you arrive at that? Did you use?
Again, we looked at all of the data that's available from the toxicological data that includes studies on people, and includes studies on animals, and it's all detailed in that technical support document. So go take a look at that, and you can...
I have read it.
Exactly, you've read it.
I have read it.
So then you should, you should understand how we derive the numbers and where they're based from.
I cannot find numbers, per se, in there. What I do find is what I would call a no-threshold linear model that was used to determine the 20 parts per trillion, which by the way, varies based on substances and so on.
Well...
I'm looking for a number, and I can't seem to find it.
Well, first of all, we used a threshold approach to assess the information and to come up with the 20. We're not looking at non-threshold cancer data at this point. We will be looking at that in the next revision that will happen three years from now, because there is emerging data on that particular issue. So we are looking at it from a threshold approach, not a non-threshold approach. So that's one clarification. The numbers are not based on those non-threshold cancer endpoints, they're based upon non-cancer effects, like developmental effects, immune effects, and things like that, where there may be a threshold. Secondly, you know, if you really wanted a specific number where we're seeing effects in the animal studies, they're about tenfold higher than the values where we're setting the standard.
Yeah, the numbers I've seen, quite honestly, seem to be two orders of magnitude higher, or sometimes even higher than that. So that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, some of them are that high and some of them are lower, that, you know, some of them are in the two orders of magnitude level of difference, that is correct, but some of them are down around a factor of 10. And I don't know if you've seen the most recent studies from the European Union, looking at immunoeffects, but I would urge you to take a look at those. There are the EFSA studies, the European Food Safety Administration assessments, and studies by Philippe Gueranger's group at Harvard School of Public Health and the University of Denmark, documenting effects on immune responses in people at fairly low levels.
Yes, I agree. I've read some of that, and again, I get to the fairly low levels, but I can't see consistency yet in the interpolation of the data, but that's okay.
Yeah, well, frankly, there isn't tremendous consistency, because the toxicity information is rapidly developing, it's all brand-new stuff in terms of the research and experiments that are being performed and the studies on human populations. So yes, there certainly isn't overwhelming consistency in terms of those outputs.
Let me ask you another question, then. We're concerned not just with the level at any given instant, 20 parts per trillion, but we're concerned with the overall cumulative effects over time. What's the time period that you're most concerned with? Is it 10 years, 20 years, 50 years? And what do you think the total cumulative dose is that's acceptable over that period of time?
So the drinking water standard, the MCL of 20 parts per trillion, for the general population, is based on a lifetime of exposure. That's the typical way all of the drinking water standards for the general population are derived. In this particular case, there is a concern for the developing fetus, for the nursing infant, and also for people who fall into other potential sensitive subgroups, such as those with significant immunocompromised health conditions. In those situations, the exposures that are of concern are in the order of months.
Okay. I guess what I'm asking is, given 20 parts per trillion and below, seems to be somewhat acceptable, and you're saying it's a lifetime, what are you looking at for total dosage over a lifetime? There has to be a number that they're looking at.
Again, because it's a threshold effect, you know, that's not the relevant question. You know, it just isn't. If we were looking at cancer risk, I could give you a total cumulative dose that would associate with a particular cancer risk level, but that's not what we're looking at, because we are looking at this through the lens of a threshold series of effects.
Okay. The answers are getting more nebulous as we...
I don't think that's nebulous at all, that's exactly what it is.
Well, thresholds can be looked at a number of ways, and I don't want to debate the mathematics of that tonight. Let me ask it this way. There have been test groups of various kinds. Most of the test groups were based on studies similar, and I'll just use El Paso for the moment, I realize there are quite a number of others, that were not controlled groups, yet were being subjected to the analysis out of those various groups that were not of high control value. Is there a particular series of tests ongoing, at this time monitoring human beings with known levels of ingestion of these chemicals, where they're monitoring them on a regular basis?
And there are, yes, there are a number of ongoing EPI studies of populations that have been exposed to these compounds, where the exposures have been removed, or where there has been ongoing exposures, including studies in the European Union, and some studies by the ATSBR, that's the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry here in the United States, that are following that kind of information. Again, the likelihood of having sufficient statistical power to really definitively detect or rule-out effects at levels that we would be concerned about based strictly on those human studies is, it's pretty slim.
Okay. Then I have, I'm going to shorten this and just a couple more. One has to do with, if we're concerned with the effects of the chemicals that come from various types of cookware, and drinking water, and so forth, even cleaning fluids, should we then be considering not using any of those, not having our clothes cleaned with those chemicals, not using nonstick cookware, et cetera? And does that mean, based on this, that we ought to be getting rid of all those items in our inventory at home and elsewhere?
I think the short answer is no. We could have a much longer discussion about which ones you might want to get rid of as a consumer concerned about your personal exposures, and which ones maybe you shouldn't worry about. It's not a simple answer.
Well, based on what we see, and even what's been presented here and at the sites you send us to, I would say that if I were, as a resident, I'm looking at it, I certainly do have a concern when I'm going to have my clothes cleaned, or I'm going to buy nonstick cookware, if these chemicals are in fact present in those, about ingesting them. I guess what I'm basically saying is, I don't want to go into a whole lot more detail tonight. I am concerned that we're setting standards here. I realize that your literature has it for both the public wells up to a certain point, but also that private individuals can get their wells tested, though we don't know yet quite what the cost would be, nor the mitigation costs. I would submit that we need to have a better understanding of that, and we need to set it at a level of dialogue, is my recommendation, that people understand they've been living with this for X number of years, and if they lived with it for a little longer, it's probably not the end of the world, unless you say otherwise. But we need to calm people down, because when I read this information, my first instinct is, I better turn off my well water, I better not do this, I better not have my clothes cleaned at the dry cleaner, or buy nonsticks to wear, and I have to have my well checked, and oh my gosh, should I shut it off? I think we need to get a message out, unless you feel otherwise, that this is something that can take place over an extended period of time. So what's your view on something like that?
Well, we have established a standard at 20 parts per trillion, and under that standard, there are specific requirements vis-à-vis testing, vis-à-vis notifying the public of the presence of the contaminants when they're above those levels, or when they're detected, so that the public can make their own decisions regarding their concern. And there are specific timelines that are included in that regulation for triggering a resolution to the contamination, and I think those are all appropriate.
And Mark, if I could just add, it's, when we first spoke, Mr. Jermaine, when we were offering the free sampling, and the town was deciding whether to take us up on that, realizing there could be consequences, you had raised some of these same questions, including why do something if it's only voluntary? It's not voluntary anymore, it's required. And now that you've done that, as Mark was just saying, there are requirements that kick in, including the requirement to provide public education materials on a form provided by the department. It's not an easy-to-read form. The town asked us to make some changes, where we could, we did. What is the department's language for the reasons that Mark just described? You can be unhappy about the standard, but it is now the law. And we will be reviewing the standard in three years, in accordance with the regulation which sets that. I know Mark and his staff, and they're constantly reviewing the literature. It's possible we can change it before then, but this is the standard, and we welcome your comments, we'll certainly answer your question, but it's not the same landscape that we were discussing a couple of months ago, when this was something the town had a decision to make. It's not up to you anymore, it's a requirement.
Let me be very clear about something. I'm not arguing the standard. What I'm discussing at this point are the private wells, which this does not adhere to. And you have made it clear to people like myself, I have a private well. Many people in this town have private wells. These standards are now standards for people who use public water. And I look at it, and I'm talking to the other residents in the town who have private wells, and say, we are now concerned. How do we deal with this? At what cost? What are the risks to us? Because we're not on town water, and in fact, cannot get on town water. So we are, you're telling us at risk, and so I'm asking you, what are you going to suggest to those of us who have town water, who do not have, and have no likelihood of getting town water?
So the risk analysis that Mark presented applies to drinking water regardless of where it comes from. The Commonwealth doesn't regulate your private well. So what you do with the information that the town has provided, and the town did not have to notify every postal customer, but they did, to share that information, the regulations only apply to the public water supply and its customers, but the town provided that information in the interest of informing the public. What you do with that information is up to you, as a private well owner, and your level of comfort with the information that we have shared. The information, as Mark was describing, is different for a member of the general population than it is for someone who's pregnant, or nursing an infant, or severely immunocompromised. Those people may have a different decision-making process than you do, but it's up to you, and not the town, to make that decision based on the information we've provided. We have FAQs for private well owners on our website, I would recommend that people check with them. If people have concerns about their own personal health, they should contact their public health provider. We can provide links for health providers to our State Department of Public Health, who could put your physician in touch with somebody, another physician, who can explain this. We have a lot of resources to offer, and that's why we're here tonight, is to offer those resources to everyone in the town.
So what would you recommend, based on what your understanding is, of people who have private wells?
I would recommend that you do what is best for you.
And I would jump in and just add that it depends somewhat on who's using the water. I mean, I can speak from my own personal perspective, I'm an older guy with no significant underlying health issues, I wouldn't be super worried about drinking water that was somewhat above 20 parts per trillion, that would not bother me personally. However, if I had, unfortunately, I don't right now have young children, I would be more concerned about their consuming the water. Fortunately, these compounds are not particularly well-absorbed through the skin, they're not particularly volatile, so it's pretty safe using the water, even at higher levels, considerably higher levels, for bathing and showering and domestic types of uses that do not involve consuming the water. But again, as Mary Jude indicated, it really depends on your personal view regarding the potential for those risks, and also who's drinking and consuming that water.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to pass any further on questions. I have a number of others, and I think that we can move on, and I'll add these to a list that we'll pass on to DEP and our representatives.
Great, thank you for your questions.
Yeah, absolutely, and send those along, and we'll do our best to try to answer them at a later date.
Thanks. Thank you. All right?
Thank you. I do have a few questions. Some things I just kind of wanted a, I don't know, confirmation, clarification on. So for the risk factors for the vulnerable population, it was primarily drinking the water, or cooking something that would absorb the water, like pasta or rice? It does not, does not apply to bathing or washing, like fruits and vegetables, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, some of my questions might be random, but the A triple F foam that was discussed, is that what's used in gas stations?
It might be. It's the kind of foam that is used for oil and gasoline-type fires, so it is potentially the type that might be used if there was a fire at a gas station.
So should we be taking any kind of, any kind of steps with our, you know, local gas stations to make sure that they do not have that kind of foam?
You could ask. I mean, the chief, the fire chief, I don't know if the chief is on this call, but the chief would probably have information about the fire suppression systems. I will say, the problematic foam was military spec, and if you're looking at things, you'll see a lot of contamination around military bases. Fort Devens, you know, former Fort Devens, now Devens, is contaminated from the military activities there, Joint Base Cape Cod. Joint Base Cape Cod, Westover, Westfield. But the, I think the fire departments themselves, and I don't know about the gasoline stations, were less likely to have those kinds of foam. And it has been phased out to the extent that the military has its own specs, but I don't think it is in that much commercial use anymore. Mark, I don't know if you have more information about that.
Yeah, unfortunately, it hasn't been completely phased out at this point simply because it is the most effective material for suppressing and fighting those types of fires. There's a lot of work happening right now, which DEP, our agency is working with Connecticut on to identify fluorine-free, PFAS-free foam alternatives that are also effective, but that's still an area of ongoing research. Yep. So it's, it is the potential for those out there and still potentially for use on those types of fires.
Okay. And I think, let's see, I have two, two questions left. The first one, sort of circling back a little bit on the topic of private well owners, I took a quick look at the information on your website and I happen personally to not be a private well owner, but I think I would probably be a bit concerned if it was found like in the area, then obviously there's a chance that it could be in my well water. Do you have, I didn't notice on here any specific resources of like who or companies that, is it maybe the laboratory certification listing? I'm just wondering where we could refer private well owners to like companies to contact if they want to test the levels. Do we have any idea, you know, ballpark range, how much that would cost somebody to do? Just so people have more information.
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you for asking that. There are currently five laboratories who are certified to do the EPA analysis that we require for PFAS, the specific tests. There is a list on our website and it's updated as more labs get certified. I think there is the ability for a consumer to contact a lab directly and ask them how they could send samples to the lab. One of the things that you have to keep in mind, whether you would choose to do the sampling yourself or hire somebody who shows up in Milis and is writing pamphlets about saying, we'll test your water for PFAS. It's very easy to contaminate your sample because it's in so much stuff. So if you're using a waterproof notebook, which our field staff do, if you're using like a Sharpie, our Assistant Commissioner for the Waste Site Cleanup Program was at a similar meeting like this Mark and I were at and he said basically you should sample naked if you're going to do it because there are just so many things that could interfere. So I'm not, I'm not saying not to do it yourself and you should certainly stick with the list of labs that's on our website, but whatever instructions they provide, you really need to follow to the letter. And I would certainly urge the same sort of caution that we have our public water systems using, that if you get a detection, take a second sample and make sure that first sample was not cross-contaminated.
And the part of the question is to cost. Do you guys have any idea what that costs, people?
It's around $300, $350. I asked Marielle Stone, Marielle, have you heard, I heard prices were coming down a little bit and then they seem like they kind of stabilized around $300, $350.
That's the price that I've been hearing, anywhere from like $250 to $350. So this really depends which lab.
Yeah. That is all correct and of course, we don't really regulate the pricing at all. So as more people test, the demand goes up, you know, the pricing can fluctuate, but ballpark numbers, those would be correct.
And those are set by the labs themselves that are doing the testing, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
All right. I think, thank you, first of all, thank you. Actually, not first of all, at the end of all my questions, thank you for taking the time to meet with us. My last question is, what happened, and maybe somebody was going to get into this, but what happens next? So what, how do we mitigate this issue with the impacted wells?
So I'll defer that back to Jim. The good thing is the treatment is pretty simple. There are carbon, just like a really huge Brita filter, that Jim or Ron could describe how that would work. Carbon is effective at removing PFAS as are some ion exchange resins. And in our region, we have systems that are using both. And typically what a, what a town will do is do a pilot test and see which one works best for its particular suit of PFAS and perhaps other things that they're treating for. You have to look at the existing treatment system and figure out what would fit best with your current process so as not to monkey with that. But I'll defer to Jim. I'm sure you guys have already been thinking and talking about that.
So the committee's meeting this Thursday and that will be brought to there. I'm sure this will be the first thing that the committee will discuss. It's funny how you say people will be running into your town now that they know. I got a phone call today from somebody, oh, we do these temporary systems that you're talking about. We bring it in in a truck. We'd be willing, happy to come and talk to you. I would, you know, Kleinfelder will be our advisory group on this for right now and, you know, we'll move forward with that. And we will present something to the, not to the board Thursday night, but we'll first discuss it and then we'll move forward from that after that.
Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions.
Okay, I'm going to have a couple of questions as well and they're going to be a little bit hopefully trying to home in on our situation. I just want to make it clear, and maybe I can ask you, Jim, going back to the public water supply, in other words, the customers of our water system who turn on the spigot tonight, the wells that are suspect are not going to be used and they won't be getting any of that water. Is that right?
As of right now, that's correct. What we know right now, Wells 1 and 2 in the treatment facility is offline.
And they've been offline since September, is that right?
That's correct.
That's correct. But, you know, after a conversation like this, I just want to make sure that our citizens and our water users understand what the situation is tonight. There's no guarantee of anything, but the municipal water system in Milis has turned off the wells that have tested above the 20 parts per trillion. Now, if it continues to migrate to other wells, we'd have a different problem, but that's where we are today. So I think we want to make sure that everybody understands that. We talked tonight about sort of what I would call two, two different situations here. One is private decision-making. We've had a fair amount of conversation about that. And to the extent that individuals who are private well users have a concern, we've indicated that there's, there are resources that they can find. There's some guidance that they can find on your website and whatnot. Everybody has to buyer beware, of course, make sure you're getting a legitimate person to do work. But my question really is a little bit more about the migration in the aquifer itself. We've talked tonight about Wells 1 and 2 where we think perhaps contamination originated at two sites which were for, you know, 100 years, either manufacturing or tanneries or other kinds of industrial uses. So if in fact that's the source, and we don't know that for sure, what's the risk that the, if, in other words, the, if this, what we've done in the past with contamination is we have put in mitigation efforts and we've looked for sources and tried to get rid of them. Now, if the sources of this contamination are those two locations in the center of town, it seems to me that the likelihood of the aquifer on the other wells getting, being contaminated by this seems to be less to me, but maybe I'm wrong. So any view of the migration of this contamination throughout the aquifer, because we're talking about six wells in Milis located, you know, miles and miles away from each other?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's another long conversation that we'd be happy to talk about to come back to another meeting. We don't have that great vision.
Yeah, if it's a long conversation, we don't want to have tonight, so.
No, but, you know, so we start, we start with where we think it is and we think at this point in time that we have enough information to look at those two sites that are near these wells. Because of the ubiquitous nature of it in the environment, it is hard to figure out where else it might be coming from. And we'll try to work with the town to the extent that we can on that, given the nature of our knowledge from some other communities. We have some ideas about where we've seen things, but until there's like a hydrogeological investigation that the folks at Kleinfelder could help you think about to determine groundwater flow direction, the depth of things, the geology beneath the ground, that kind of stuff, the water department probably has some of that and you could do a technical review and get some ideas about that, but there's, there's a very large amount of information yet to be learned to answer those kinds of questions.
Jim or Tristan, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this point or any thoughts on what we need to do to really, because there's mitigation, which is going to cost us, whatever it's going to cost us. I'm glad to hear from our friends at the DEP that just put a little charcoal out there and everything will go away. That'd be great. And I assume it's not going to be quite that cheap. But any thoughts on, you know, my question relative to the source and whether the chances in the short term of it migrating to the other wells?
Yeah, I'd be happy to comment on that. I mean, I think in the short term, just, I mean, I am a hydrogeologist and knowing how groundwater moves, it's not going to tend to move super rapidly. I have not, you know, yet had an opportunity to look at, but again, the detailed geology of the area, but just from looking at things, how they are spaced out, where they are, the watersheds, you know, it's not going to happen overnight, to answer your question, but could it possibly happen over time or could there be other sources we don't yet know about? Yeah, that's possible.
Okay. Again, we're trying to gauge short-term and long-term risk here and to the, and to the extent that we have, you know, properties, locations that are fairly close to these two wells as a potential source, you know, is, you know, I don't know whether it's troublesome or helpful. And I am concerned about site disturbance because if part of the source here is the Herman Shoe Building, which was just torn down in order to build a new building, what are the chances that that disturbance or the destruction of the GAF building or the, you know, demolishing of it have created some level of disturbance which is accelerating this thing, this PFAS? And is there something we should be doing in terms of land use protection to, you know, I'm just throwing this out. I mean, if that property is excavated and it's going to cause additional problems for us, we better act on it sooner rather than later and the developer needs to know about it.
Well, any cleanup going on would have to meet the cleanup standards for soil and groundwater which preceded the MCL and, you know, Mary Jude, please jump in, but they would be required to remediate to drinking water levels.
Right, but I just had a regulation, I just had a regulation that was, went into effect last week or two weeks ago.
Yeah.
The cleanup, the cleanup standard has been in place since December. So the way it works, and again, not to give a whole big explanation of our Waste Site Cleanup Program, but if you own a site from which contamination is going to either public or private water supply, well, you're, regardless of the impact, you are strictly liable without regard to fault. You have to address it. Where the impact is to drinking water, it's a special higher level where you have to take what we call immediate response actions. So rather than go through a long, five-year process of taking steps and eventually getting to what we call a permanent solution, if your contamination is affecting someone's drinking water, you have to do something about it immediately. And that's what we've been doing in other communities and that would be in the nature of mitigating exposure. It's not necessarily mitigating the problem immediately because you do have to do these large-scale geological, hydrogeological investigations to figure out how to fix the problem. But in terms of mitigating exposure, if we can help you identify sites and then site owners who have sources that are likely affecting public or private water supply wells, those parties are liable for the cost. So we would like to continue to help you with that investigation as much as we can. We can't be your lawyers, but we can at least ask the questions to provide you with some helpful information so that you can pursue those pathways.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I have one other question and that relates to the, not the municipal water customer or, or perhaps the municipal water customer because there's, you know, the notification talks about the higher risk groups and talks about a solution, you know, can be bottled water or what have you. And, you know, or a filter that you can install in your home. I have a concern about just having people left with the impression that if they use bottled water, it's okay. Everything's fine. Because frankly, this is private industry now, right? And I know that in years gone by, companies were bottling water in our town at a well immediately adjacent to Route 109 and that water would never have been allowed in the municipal water system because it was potentially contaminated by salt and sand and chemicals on the road. So some thoughts, again, I know you mentioned it earlier, where would a consumer go to be sure that if they felt as an individual choice that they wanted to rely more heavily on drinking water either forever or in the short term, bottled water, where would they go to make sure that the water that they're going to purchase meets the standards that you're setting for the municipal water system?
On our website, there is a link to a list of water, water companies that have voluntarily tested and provided us with that information. There's also a Consumer Reports article this month, I think it's the November issue, that evaluated both still water and sparkling water and has sample results because again, this is a nationwide issue. So there is some information out there that's broader than our information, but we have specifically bottled water on our website. Like I said, just Google Masti EP PFAS and we'll see the links.
If you knew me, you would understand why asking me to Google it would probably not be, would be a fool's errand.
I will send you the list.
I would ask Jim or the folks in the town hall, if we can highlight that link, where somebody can go who wants to be sure that the water they're going to buy for bottled water is, is meeting the standard, I think it would be helpful. Just, you know, there's a big difference between giving them, you know, information and giving them everything. Everything is as useless as nothing. So we need to, we need to at least utilize what the DEP is, you know, basically telling the citizens of the Commonwealth that this is the kind of water from these sources that would, you know, meet these, these safety standards. Okay, I'd like to ask if members to the Board of Health or the Health Director would like to comment and then after that, I would ask if their folks from our community would like to ask a question, that they get the opportunity to do so. So John, is there anything you'd like to add or Kathy?
May I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Thank you for bringing up the issue concerning.
Kathy, can you just identify?
Oh, Kathy Laney, member of the Board of Health. In looking at the testing that was done, the, I think in every sample, but one in all the wells in Milis, the highest PFAS was, was the one related to, you know, something like waterproofing in the shoe industry. So I'm very interested in his question about us digging, any, any kind of digging being done at the, the former Herman Shoe site. So one of my questions to you guys, and you may not know the answer and I will try to find it out as well, is I know some testing was done on the soils at that site prior to the demolition. Do we know that the PFAS levels were tested at that time or did it predate December?
That I don't know. I can, I can see if we have any information, if it is currently in our Waste Site Cleanup database. The GAF facility is. I don't know about Herman Shoe. The GAF facility is, I don't know about Herman Shoe, I can look. If the testing predated the discovery of the PFAS in the public water supply, they probably did not test for it. What we are telling, the cleanup process is overseen by people called licensed site professionals. It's a privatized program. But we have guidance for those licensed site professionals that says, if you have a reason to think you might have PFAS, you need to sample for PFAS. So clearly, if there were soil sampling taking place under our regulated waysite cleanup program, they should be looking for PFAS. I'll check on the status of that site.
Thank you. My, I just have a, a simple question. And I, I know you're early in the process of doing serial testing of groundwater for water supplies in Massachusetts. But what impact would the fact that the initial tests were less than the standard, and when tested later, later, further into the Massachusetts drought, that the numbers were higher? And did you see things like that in other tests done in the, in the more highly stricken by drought areas of Massachusetts?
I'll ask Marielle, who has a better grip on the 59 different water systems that have been doing sampling. My, my recollection is we didn't really, like in the town of Hudson, who's been dealing with this for a couple of years, because they were part of that unregulated contaminant monitoring rule, so they have been dealing with PFAS since then. I don't remember that we really saw any effect of drought conditions in Hudson. Or else, do you know, Marielle, or do we just not have enough information yet?
I don't, I don't think we have enough information, but we, we definitely see changes in water quality during drought conditions, you know, not just with PFAS, but with other contaminants. So it is something that we do see, it's something that we're going to, you know, as we start to gather more and more data, you know, keep an eye on. I mean, we have seen in Hudson, one situations when they took the well offline, we actually saw the contamination level go up. Because when they were pumping, they were pulling in water from other places, perhaps, and it was either diluting or whatever. But when they took one of their wells offline, we actually saw the levels go up quite a bit. So we do, so that's something to watch for when you go put the well back online. So we, we do see changes when the groundwater level changes.
Hey, this is John.
John, go ahead, John.
John, I'm the Board of Health Director. Getting very educated tonight on the PFAS subject. Unfortunately, I've been more encompassed with COVID. But at the end of the day, I was just kind of curious, the bottled water situation and the listing of companies that have the threshold below the criteria, I should say, 20 pots per trillion that they're looking at, how, how are they releasing that data to the DEP? Are they, are they going through a standard similar to what towns would test at various wells that they may own at different sites? Is that, is that part of the standard that they're handing in as far as bottled water? Does anyone know?
I think Mark may have information about exactly what we require them to show us, but these are, these are water companies that have not detectable when it, there's no, there's no PFAS.
Yeah, and it, you know, it's somewhat problematic for getting the good quality data here in that we're not regulating the bottled water industry. So we don't have sort of the teeth to, to really require reporting as robustly as we would for a public water supply. So they're submitting this information voluntarily. We do look at it and try to confirm that it's good data. But again, it's not as extensive necessarily as what we would expect and require from a public water supply. So, you know, it's a situation where the consumer, you know, really does need to follow up, I think, with, with the bottler of whatever water you're consuming, to inquire as to exactly what data they have and whether they'd be willing to share that information.
Well, I can tell you, especially to the chair, the information on our web sheet, website is, was updated in March. And there are nine bottling companies who have provided us information. They provide you with a contact person's email as well as a lab report. I can just read them off. Berkshire Springs, Coca-Cola, which makes Dasani, that's what they tested, was the Dasani brand. Misty Mountain, a German company called Alpine Water that makes Halstein Artesian Water. Poland Spring, which tested both their Poland Spring brand and the Nestle Pure Life brand. Creekside Springs, which makes Propel, that sports electrolyte water, which is manufactured Pepsi. Crystal Spring, Niagara Bottling, and Sand Springs. But there are, there are contact for some of these actual names of people, not just a website, but contact information if, if the board or with an individual wanted to follow up with that. And again, that's for, this is a, a company that had non-detect, not just a lower number than 20, but non-detect.
Well, this is people who are selling bottled water as opposed to somebody who's selling a beverage that is mostly water.
This is just bottled water.
Okay. I don't want to ask you directly about beer, because I think that's beyond the scope of this evening's meeting.
We've had the question about beer.
The microbe may not be immune.
Yeah, put it on the website, will you? All right. So I'd like to just take the opportunity at this point to ask if there's anybody out there in the audience. It's kind of hard to find people, but I want to make sure if anyone has a question. I'd like to try and wrap this up, certainly no later than eight o'clock, but, you know, I do want to give residents a chance to answer questions that they may have. And Karen, can you help me sort of get through that?
I certainly can.
So if you have a question, raise your hand, I guess is the answer.
Yes, or just pop up there. All right, we do have Laura Whitaker.
Okay, Laura, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I am one of the vulnerable subgroups, I would say. So I just have a couple of questions about that. I was drinking the Milis water while pregnant with my son, and he is now nine months old. So my question, I guess, is that I had a conversation with his pediatrician, and he was not that concerned. But I'm wondering if someone could speak more to developmental impacts, what I should be concerned about looking for. Obviously, we're now looking into reverse osmosis in different water systems to help in the future. But I'm just wondering if someone can speak a little bit to that.
Well, just two things. One is if your pediatrician would like to speak with another physician, I can send you the contact information at the State Department of Public Health. They, they do, they can connect up doctors with doctors, and I'd be happy to provide that to you. Mark will probably want to weigh in on the rest of your question, but I don't want to lose my train of thought with reverse osmosis, which comes with a particular set of issues if you choose to do that. It's very water inefficient, and it generates a lot of wasted water that you need to find someplace to put, and you can't put it in the ground, you can't put it in your septic system. So we do not recommend the use of reverse osmosis as a treatment for your, for your house or for a single unit like a tap, just because it's very complicated to get rid of what's called the reject water. Mark, I don't know if you wanted to cover any of the other, the exposure scenarios or anything like that.
Yeah, I think I would recommend really sort of listening to, to what your pediatrician is, is really saying, as the, he or she has the sort of best handle on your specific situation. The Milis water, you know, they took the most contaminated well offline, and it was barely above 20, as I understand it here, it wasn't particularly high. I don't think there's a particularly high risk from prior consumption of the water in your situation. But, but again, you know, I think that, that is best left to, to your pediatrician. And as Mary June indicated, if your pediatrician would like to follow up, there is a network managed through our Department of Public Health of experts who have experience dealing with environmental health hazards in the clinical setting. They might be able to provide him or her with some additional information.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, we have Elizabeth Johnson.
Okay, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Hi, thank you, everybody. Thank you for your time this evening. I just had a couple of quick questions. So I know there was in the, early in the discussion, there was talk about a system that's available, you know, I guess we'll call it a giant Brita filter, that can help, you know, mitigate and reduce levels of the PFAS. And I understand that that's on, you know, the agenda for the town's, you know, next discussion. But what is, what's the sort of lead time for implementing a system like that? And what are like the order of magnitude of costs? Is that just something that still needs to be evaluated? Or the town is, you know, going to move ahead and start the process to get those two sort of filtrations set up for wells one and wells two, at least to sort of mitigate it in the immediate future? Or?
Jim, Jim may want to speak to the specifics of it. I can tell you that in the beginning, when we were dealing with communities like Hudson and Air and Hyannis, the equipment was very hard to get, and there was a wait to get equipment. And actually, Jim was talking about the mounted, the truck-mounted units, that's what Hudson used in the beginning, was the truck-mounted unit. There's an opportunity to make money, so lots of companies are jumping into making this treatment technology. Again, this is a problem all over the United States. So I, my impression is that it has been easier to get equipment, to get its size, to figure out what it is that you would need specifically for Milis. I don't think we're seeing the delays, but Jim, you've probably had conversations with the suppliers, or you've been thinking about what to pilot for Milis.
So Milis is pretty lucky. We have six producing wells, and, and we have a great resource in those six wells, and we can produce a lot of water out of those wells. Taking wells one and two offline, even as in September, it, it, it really doesn't affect us as much as maybe another community that has more of a demand on their service. Taking another well offline, that could change the whole scope of, you know, where we, you know, we could move forward within, you know, within weeks. The town, you know, with, with the new growth, you know, many new projects that have been built in Milis, we still haven't, our pumpage rates haven't gone up all that much. So we still feel that, you know, with, with pumping, I mean, today we pump with wells three, four, and I believe it's well five. We don't run wells five and six together. And if we have to take off, we're actually looking for an immediate look, changing the manifold system at wells one and two, that we can run well one, because that's below the, you know, the 20 pots per trillion. We're looking at that right now. And then we would test that and see if we could get that back online. So those are some of the sources that we're looking at right now for immediate work. And then the ultimate hope, we would flush the wells one and two in a couple of weeks, and hopefully we'd take another sample and take a follow-up sample. And if we can put it back online, then, you know, with, you know, under the regulations, then we will.
Mr. Chairman?
I could also, go ahead.
You have something you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, this is something we work on, and, you know, that the availability of the units is, has not been an issue in more recent year or so. You can, you know, to put up a full-scale GAC system, you can do it in a matter of months if it's, you know, sort of a temporary system without a heated enclosure. And that's the more seasonal communities where they need the wells for the peak demand in the summer, like on Cape Cod, Barnstable, for example. You do have a little bit more flexibility with the amount of wells that you have. But I, in putting together the draft grant application that we did for you guys a few months ago, you know, I think we said you could get something up within approximately six months. But, you know, it's not, you know, it's not cheap. The units themselves probably would end up costing around $500,000. And then you have the enclosure and the piping and the electric upgrades, data, et cetera. It's good to have some time. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jermaine?
I have talked with our representatives, Linsky and Dooley. There has been money set aside by the state to assist communities with the costs of these upgrades. To what extent they're willing to assist is unclear at this point, but both of them have said they understand the concern and they're willing to work with us. And I will say what Kirsten just said is exactly the kind of thing we were looking for from Kleinfelder and others. They've been great in helping us in that regard. I've heard estimates everywhere from $500,000 to $1 million for the well. I have no knowledge of what that really would be. But in talking with those two reps, it sounds like they're willing to help us to some considerable degree if we do implement these cleansing devices.
Okay, other questions?
I just, we will, we will apply, we will definitely apply when the next round comes out, we'll be the first ones in line.
We have one more?
Well, I, I would, could I just add that, you know, from the point of view of, of the town and the water commissioners, I want to emphasize that the town has a very robust water-producing system. We can produce much more water than we need, which gives us the flexibility to shut off two wells and still service the public adequately without going over the, the limit. And we, as Jim indicated earlier, we have a new committee that's just formed to talk about strategy and whatnot. They'll be meeting on Thursday, and hopefully they'll address this issue. But I think that the water commissioners, which is the select board, are committed to making whatever investments we need to, to make sure that the water system continues to service the town in its current environment and as, as it grows and we get new customers. So I know it's, you know, maybe sound like a little bit of a platitude, but this town for decades has committed millions of dollars, millions and millions of dollars to the water system, and we're proud of it, and we're not going to let it, the contamination shut us down. We're just not going to. Other questions?
Mr. Kim?
Yes, evening. I had a question about the concentration. Actually, I actually have a couple of questions, but I'll start with the concentration. We were told that it's a 20 PPT or 20 nanograms per liter. I guess, I guess what we're told was below 20 is okay. So what is our target of concentration of PFAS in the water right now? What are we shooting for? You said you're watering it down, diluting it to a certain level. So what is that number?
Yeah, Kirsten, do you want to, I mean, it's got to be below the 20 pots per trillion, but I'll let you answer.
Well, if you're speaking about the current situation where the treatment is not yet available to remove it to much lower levels, I would say, really, you know, one pot per trillion or less, they're not sampling out within the distribution system of the blended water. The samples that are being collected are at the wells, at the sources. So we don't know what the blend levels are in the system right now. But they're, they certainly should be less than 20 currently. But for future treatment goals or targets, we typically try, try to set a goal for non-detect, you know, particularly at the already low levels you have, you should be able to achieve quote-unquote non-detect. quote unquote, non-detect, which is right now laboratory detection limits are running around two parts per trillion or nanograms per liter is the same thing.
Okay. My next question is, you said, I believe you said earlier, it takes two to four weeks for the water test to come back. Is that correct? And if it takes two to four weeks for the water test to go out and come back, what if there's a, what if there's a spike in the, in the concentration in the meantime?
So it takes actually three weeks. We've already, on course, we just tested well three three weeks ago and we should get those results back with a, without the confirmation sample. There's two, two sets that go out for each source that you take. The, we take the sample itself from the well and then with the point of entry. And then we, there's a blank sample that's taken and I believe the blank sample is to pick up on if somebody did use a, some sort of contaminated at that testing. And then we get a phone call. If it's over the, over the limit and within, you know, a couple of days, we get a print out from the laboratory of what that results are. But once we get the phone call, that's when, if it's over, I would, which we've done in the past with wells one and two, we immediately call for, you know, the re-sample even before we even got the paperwork in. And if it's as what we did at wells one and two, if it was over and we have the ability, we'll take the well offline.
I could add, add something because I believe your, what your question was trying to get at, what about the in-between period where we don't know, right? If they're testing monthly or quarterly, depending on the regulation requires, there's a period of unknown in the middle. I would guess I would just say, you know, nothing's said in stone or guaranteed, but because these are groundwater wells, the nature of groundwater flow tends to dampen things. You're not going to tend to see a real big spike or noise in the data. You are going to probably, you may see trends over time, periods of, you know, months, multiple months, quarters to years, you might see a trend, but it's, it's not like a flashy system where it's going to change rapidly over the period of a month, if, you know, if that helps.
Yes, it does. Thank you. So in the meantime, we'll be tracking down where the originating source for the PFAS is. My, I guess for me, my last question is the, I guess, something you guys were addressing at the end there, about a filtration system. Where, are we currently formulating for that at this point going forward?
Yes, we are. And to answer the, to your first question, and it might help you, we are testing one of the wells monthly, as I stated earlier. One of the wells is being tested monthly for PFAS six and the others are being, that are online, they're all being tested quarterly. And we are looking into, you know, what's the best source to get these two wells up and running. As I stated, we're looking at, hopefully we can get one of them, whether it's well number one, we want to try to get that. We just have to change the, we have to put a VFD in it, we have to change the motor and there's different aspects of it. That's what we're looking at for the, for the immediate future and we will be looking at the long-term treatment.
The reason I ask these, these questions was, I have experience with PFAS. My parents actually live in Westfield with an airport and what they have done was, the fire department up at the airport was using PFAS to put out chemical fires. They were, for their training, obviously. And that got into their water and that became a little issue that snowballed into currently a giant issue. And ultimately where they're sitting is, who's going to pay for it? So they, you know, they've been, the federal government has been passing the buck from one agency to another and ultimately, you know, they're, they're in a limbo right now. So that's, you know, it's a very serious concern for me. And I'm sure it is also the concern of the town.
It is. It definitely is. It's, it's a, it's a great concern. You know, to address some of the fire issues, the fire chief, he's been a, you know, he's been a Millis fireman for many, many, many years and he's already been in contact with the DEP. They're looking, they're going through their files and looking to see the last, you know, how many fires they actually fought with phone. So we are researching all that. I mean, it's not like it's, it's, and follow-up with Herman Schu and I know there, there was almost, I believe, Mary June, I think it was like 18 or 20 something letters that have gone out from the DEP with questions on, on since this PFAS issue arose, once we hit the 20 pots per trillion. So we are trying to research it with the help of the DEP and we will look at, you know, studies that will need to be done on our part through Kleinfelder.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Kirsten. Thank you, everybody in town and everybody working on this, on this unfortunate thing that we have walked into. But we have full confidence, hope that this turns out for the better, I guess.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
We all, we're all, I hope we're all heading in the same direction. And we certainly will try to look for as many alternative funding sources as we can. But the water system is, up till now, a sustaining operation with reserves and whatnot. So if we have to go forward and do remediation before we get grants and whatnot, we will certainly explore doing that. Because at this, at this stage of the game, as I've said several times, water delivered to Millis customers today, water customers, meet the standard, the PFAS standard. And so the problem at this stage of the game is not inexpensive, but it is, it is sustainable with, or we can contain it and hopefully move forward. But to not look at it, as you indicated, to look at it, we've got to look at it realistically and we can't just ignore it. We've got to move on. So if there's, I'll have time for one more question if there's someone would like to speak because we wanted to move on. We do have something, we have to, with an eight o'clock, is there another question?
I think Linda's iPhone is the last one we can take.
Okay.
Linda?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yeah, is this Linda's iPhone?
This is Linda's iPhone, yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
This is her husband.
Sound great.
She has a phone.
I just wanted to ask one question. Are we blending all of the well water that we're currently using? Are we, are all citizens in the town receiving blended water or are some citizens of the town receiving water from one well and other citizens receiving from another well?
Ryan, or Dave, do you want to answer that? It is a blended source, but I'll let one of the technicians answer that question.
Yes, it is most definitely a blended source from the three wells that we have online and they have low limits of PFAS. And we keep on doing testing.
So the blend, so the blended limit would be, we assume right now the blended limit would be below 20?
Oh, absolutely. Some of the wells, like for instance, well six probably has a PFAS report of like, say around three. I don't, and then five, I have some paperwork right here. Five is at four and a half. And well four is, yep, well four is at 4.24. So yeah, they're well below even the 10. Once they start getting in the 10 range, we have to start testing monthly. I hope that helps.
Yeah, so for right now, the water that everyone in the town is drinking is below 20?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Most definitely. You're welcome.
And that's the point I think we want to emphasize before, you know, we sign off that the well, everything is, as of today, is, the source that you turn, when you turn your spigot on, is below 20 pots per trillion. And if it changes, through the monthly and quarterly testing, we will notify everyone as soon as it comes out.
Right, we'll address that issue ASAP, correct? Yes, and Jim, just to make sure that we let, because we've talked about sort of two sources, we're talking about the water that, Millis water customers from the, from the town. That's what we've been testing, that's what we've been looking at. And we, as we talked about earlier, the private well owner, you know, does have some options about testing. And I think part of the reason for letting everybody in town know, not just the water system customers, is we want everybody to have the information they need to do whatever they want to, they want to, they think is necessary for their own family, so. All right, well, I do want to thank everyone for participating this evening, our guests from the DEP and our citizens and all the folks that worked so hard on this, the Kleinfelder folks. We really appreciate your participation this evening and we particularly appreciate your openness to taking the questions in the public forum. I'm sure this is not the first public forum you've ever been involved in, nor will it be the last. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, well, let, assuming there are people out there who don't necessarily want to continue to participate, we'll give them a chance to.
It's going to be down to the six of us.
Okay, so the next item I have on my agenda is a continuation of the stormwater hearing for the Sparhawk Academy project. So this is a, this is a hearing that was continued, but we do have to take the motion to reopen the hearing. So I will make a motion that the board reopens the stormwater hearing for Sparhawk Academy.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to reopen the hearing. I'll call the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is reopened. And now I think Karen, you're going to tell us that they're requesting us to defer the hearing again.
I am indeed. They were not quite ready. They did want to defer it. I, I know you had mentioned that you wanted to address that after-town meeting, since there's a lot of business to handle before that. So I think I have it deferring to 11/16 at 7:00 PM, if that is, works for you.
Okay, that's fine with me. So our meeting on November 16th was just after the town meeting. We would schedule the hearing for...
Oh, we lost you for a minute, Jim.
I will make a motion that the hearing be continued for the Sparhawk Academy stormwater hearing till 7:00 PM on November 16th.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded to continue the hearing to November 16th at 7:00 PM. I'll call the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Okay, so the hearing is continued. Okay, next item on our agenda is a responding to a request from Mr. McKay regarding the temporary additional hours for the transfer station.
Mr. McKay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the past, where we've had severe storms, that we've had, the boards always granted that we open up the transfer station for just brush only, that it can be dropped off at the transfer station. And that's always been granted by previous boards. So I would ask permission that you allow the transfer station to be opened for all Millis residents, again, all Millis residents, on Thursday, October 22nd and Friday, October 23rd, between the hours of 8:30 AM and 1:30 PM.
Okay, so this would be to try and help people who are trying to still, trying to clean up from the storm the other week. Any questions from the board?
No questions.
I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the transfer station being open to all residents from 8:30 to 1:30 PM on October 22nd and 23rd.
Second, it's been moved and seconded for the board to approve the opening of the transfer station to all Millis residents for brush removal on Thursday, October 22nd and Friday, October 23rd, from 8:30 AM to 1:30 PM, again, open to all residents of Millis. I'll call the board on this motion. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will work with Karen tomorrow, we'll put it on the Millis Facebook page and maybe we'll do a reverse time on call so everybody can say they were notified. Thank you.
Indeed.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being proactive about it.
Mr. Chairman?
Next item, yes?
A quick comment. I want to, excuse me, just thank the DPW for their efforts over the last week or so. I can tell you from personal experience, what I saw and the hours they worked, the effort they put in, much appreciated all the way around. And I don't mean just the DPW, obviously all of our public safety people are out there. But I will tell you, Jim, your folks have been excellent and it's a privilege to be able to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will make sure they know that. And again, you're absolutely correct, it's a great team and we all work together, you know, and it's under the leadership, I'm not, because he's on here, under the leadership of the town administrator, but we have a good team, both chiefs, myself, the board of health, everybody, we all work together. And it's all in the best interest of the Millis residents and I will let them know. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jermaine. I think that echoes the sentiments of the full board as well, so thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is a motion to amend or add a provision to our board policies and procedures. Mr. Kozinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in your packet, I think it's page 24 of your packet, but it's actually page six of the board's policies and procedures. At the bottom of that page, you'll see highlighted, at the bottom, the last paragraph reads, "Members of the board, staff, the town administrator or others who prepare background materials for the meeting should have such material available for board members a minimum of 48 hours prior to the meeting's start time. The agenda materials still provided to the select board will be posted on the town website for public access by noon the day of the meeting." So that, that is the language proposed for the board's consideration and acceptance as far as posting the board's packet materials for the public to be able to follow along during the meeting.
So this is the recommendation with respect to the posting of all the information on the website. Certainly we would, when the day comes, hopefully someday when we're meeting again in the selectman's office, we would also have that, some of that information as much as required for a paper handout and whatnot, but we would continue to maintain the posting of the material on the website, not only during the period when we have, you know, the Zoom and COVID restrictions, but as a permanent component of the policies and procedures of the board. Any comments, questions from the board members? Comfortable with this approach? I mean, we can always, we can always expand it or whatever, but let's, this is a way to make sure we've set ourselves with a deadline.
I think this sounds reasonable as long as, I mean, if we have the information 48 hours prior, then I would imagine that it wouldn't be a hardship to get it posted, you know, by noon the day of the meeting. Information's already out there, so.
I have no problem with the concept.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, you know, there's a moving target as those of you who follow the board knows, and there could well be some information that gets furnished to the board members frankly at four o'clock in the afternoon. But I mean, this is an effort to get out what we have and try to discourage other information. Because the board is doing two things here. One is to try and get presenters to get their information together and get it to us in time. And then secondly, to provide it to the community at large through the website. Any other questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, if I might, Kathy McInnes. Thanks a lot for, thanks a lot for doing this. I'm just wondering, it's probably more work than should be done, but just throw it out there that if the board has a meeting, let's say on the same type of meeting that the PFAS... let's say, on the same type of meeting that the PFAS had all of these slides, and a lot of us are people that like to look at a slide on paper rather than either on our phones, that maybe you could provide that on a Friday, you know it's not gonna change or anything, Mr. Chair, just give us a, some time to absorb it, and so that, you know, people all on social media were all talking about it, that if they had an avenue like this, again, this was a unique situation, but just to allow the residents, unless, of course, a slides change, I had no idea what goes on, but I'd just like to throw it out there, Mr. Chairman, if you think it's something that would help the townspeople, thanks.
Well, we certainly will, but I can tell you that the slides changed at 4 o'clock today.
Oh, okay.
We've got a goal here, and we're gonna try to do it as best we can, and I think we did post, we did post these, but, of course, we didn't notify anybody necessarily, but in any event, this is a policy that, you know, we want to adopt, and we want to move forward, and if we want to improve it over time, we can do that, but we want to put a stake in the ground here for folks. And if everything was hatched in stone on Friday, and of course, we're not even open on Friday right now, but you can be sure the other members of the board would be delighted too. All right, so, we have, I'll make a motion that we accept this proposal, again, according to our policies and procedures, we notified the board members that we were gonna be discussing this at the last meeting, so now it is appropriate under our guidelines to act on it tonight, so I make a motion that we approve the recommended posting requirement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the posting requirement under the, for meeting and material under the policies and procedures. I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discuss and amend the September 11th town meeting warrant. We're gonna ask the town administrator to, and the finance director will walk us through this, as many of you are aware, we had a wide-ranging discussion on the original proposal at the tri-board meeting with the school committee and the finance committee, I think that members of that, in the end of that meeting, were looking for some amendments to that, based upon some of the views of how they felt we should move forward in terms of allocating revenue and whatnot, and utilizing some of the potentially available funds. So, we've gone back to the drawing board a little bit, and we have developed a new proposal. Now, in terms of the, sort of, the mechanics here, what we need to do tonight, if we, if the board accepts this proposal, we need to reopen the warrant, put that in the warrant, and then close the warrant again. The reason for that is that, even though the subject matter is described in the warrant as it exists, council has advised us that for us to actually appropriate money above what was notified, what people were notified of, would not be permissible under the town meeting requirements, so we would be kind of hamstrung, we couldn't make that amendment on the floor, so, we fortunately have this time right now, you know, we're in the crunch time, but if we wanted to adopt this proposal as the board's recommendation, we still can do that tonight. So, if I could ask the, the finance director, if she could, sort of, walk us through this, and can we put the revised exhibit on, up on the screen?
Uh, I do not have it, I need to, I'd have to try to get in here, hold on a minute, I don't know if I can get to it, honestly.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, um...
While I'm figuring this out, I might be able to get to it, hold on.
Well, that's been looked at, if I might, Mr. Chairman, just to give a little backup, so, following the tri-board meeting last week, I did meet with the finance director last Thursday, and we did discuss the methodology to make adjustments as discussed at that meeting for the board's consideration today, and the finance director, as you mentioned, put together a detailed update budget chart based on those discussions, and that's the document that Karen's currently trying to access on the screen. But I'll talk a little bit about the major, major portions of the actual changes in the article, and then we can talk about the funding of that, if I may, so, the main changes here are to Article 2 and Article 7 of the warrant, and for Article 2, we're looking to basically take the $10,000 for the recreation department expenses and simply move that from outside the chart to inside the chart, so there's no net change to that item in the, in the warrant article, it's just how it's presented. The next item would be a reduction of the IT administration focused on cybersecurity from $35,000 to $20,000, and again, it's movement from outside the chart to inside the chart, because these will show as part of the 65-35 split.
There we go.
The next item, the next item of, and I just have a couple more, the next item of change is the, the actual deletion of the article dealing with the salary wage survey and the moving of those funds to inside the chart of Article 2. And then, the last change is an increase in education salaries from the $173,132 to the $256,703. So, those are the, those are the net changes, but I think the finance director put it in great detail in the chart, those specifics, so, I would certainly turn it over to the finance director, if you want to talk a little bit about the document, as you see it on the screen and in front of you.
Are we in the right place? I think we are. Carol, can you see it?
Yes, this is the, this is the chart.
Okay, good. Carol? That's her old music, interesting.
She's having her piano lessons.
I guess.
Can we do that again?
Yeah, that was me, sorry, I'm getting really tired.
Did you have Carol muted on there?
I don't, I'm saying ask to unmute, I can't do it for her.
Okay. She said she's, she's aware, she's trying to get on.
It's weird, it doesn't give you the option, I'm just saying ask to unmute, there, oh, no. Can you hear now, Carol?
I'm here.
You're here.
There she is.
I'm here.
The laundry.
There you go.
Having to walk across the hall.
Just folding the towels, guys, just folding the towels. So, on the, so, as you can see on the screen, this chart's been updated since it was given to the select board last week, and it was updated based on the conversation at the tri-board on Wednesday. You'll see the initial yellow column, which is to restore the reductions as of December 1st, that's the reductions that we took for the budget in order to accommodate the 5% reduction in state aid and local receipts. Now that we realize that's not happening, I feel that we're very confident that we'll have no problem restoring the people back to their normal schedules. The next column over are the additional salaries and expenses, that column is what was discussed at the tri-board meeting, I felt it was important to keep it separate from the restoration of the December 1st hours. As the town administrator just mentioned, the additions are the $15,000 for the week salary studies, that'll be done for the SEIU contract, the contributions, the $20,000 for cybersecurity for the town, I believe that that's town-wide, it would, that cybersecurity is important for not just municipal side, but also the school side. The next piece of that was the recreation department, even though it's a 53 and 1/2 week, they're not able to sustain themselves at this point with revenues coming in, so that the $10,000 was added to that expense line at the request of the chair of the recreation department. And finally, the additional $83,571 for the school salaries, that was put in because the other items were included in the warrant, and the school department did not think it was fair that the municipal side should receive additional funding without the school getting their 65% split. So, that's why those items were put in, that brings the total request to town meeting for Article 2 to $386,187, and that's based on the projected revenue increase of $457,000. That'll leave us with the change, at this point, it will leave us $70,953 for additional items that we might need at the spring town meeting.
Okay, so, questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm probably missing something, I think we also discussed the need for working with the trees, that was a $40,000...
That article remains, that article remains.
I'm just verifying that, and that's, I, it hadn't been, and so, I thought I'd just verify that.
So, there was only one article removed, and that article was removed, but it was moved, it was, the amount was moved to the, to the schedule here under the select board, that was the wage and salary study for the $15,000, you'll see that in its separate column.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
I have a few questions, if I could.
Yes, please.
Just want to make sure I understand, so, the money for the trees would come out of where, the $70,000 that we still have left here, or somewhere else?
No, it would come out of that $70,000 that we still have left there.
Okay, so, then we'd have, like, $30,953?
Right.
All right, so, is it typical that we would have that chunk of money to save for spring, do we typically do this?
I would think that we, we don't have definites, we typically, when the budget's created, we budget right up to the max of what we believe the revenues are, so we really don't have any excess that hasn't been budgeted, this is just a particular, and typically, I don't believe at this point in the year that you would be trying to make adjustments to your, to your operating budget at this particular level, it might just be, you know, it would come out of the free cash versus raise appropriately.
So, this whole situation is a bit unusual.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not typical that we end up with a revenue estimate at this stage of the game that's, this much higher than what we started with, and then, again, that was because we took a position as a community that we were going to cut 5% from certain projected revenue amounts, and it turned out that that's necessary.
I think the reason for my question is, I've thought a lot about this since Wednesday, understanding how, how the cuts were done differently between the two town entities, if you will, I just wasn't sure if, so, obviously, it's good that the schools are going to get more money from what we were figuring before, but I just wasn't sure if the, outside of the $40,000 for trees, which makes sense across the board in my opinion, if the $30,000 should also be allocated somewhere, or split somewhere, or if that's normal that we'd have that money. Does that make sense, is that a question that makes sense?
Well, the balance will roll to the free cash for next year, if you budget right up to your max, you won't have any free cash available, so we just rolled to free cash to be used in next fall.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, looking at it a different way, you know, we're talking about a $37 million budget overall, and one might suggest that having potentially this $70,000 as a little bit of a buffer is probably reasonable. Now, it is true that if we wanted to appropriate it all but not spend it, we could certainly decide to put it into the stabilization fund, which has basically the same outcome.
As the cash.
Well, no, stabilization is something that is there for emergencies, it's our own rainy day fund. So, I mean, that's, I mean, I had thought about that as well, as a possibility, this is a judgment call, I think we're, you know, we're cutting it close, but not ridiculously close, and, you know, if, in fact, the projected numbers come in, as we hope they will, then we're gonna be okay, but, anyway.
Okay.
I'm a little, I'm still a little concerned that this is probably a little bit, I don't want to call it aggressive is the wrong term, but I think the discussion the other night was, you know, that some of the things that perhaps we thought should have been included as a separate item, you can make a fair argument, right, that salary studies and IT functions and whatnot, you know, are legitimately part of the budget and should be analyzed that way, which then has a consequence based upon, you know, agreements that we have made in the context of how we would split the revenue, so.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just, I don't know if you're aware that your video is not on, it just says Chris's iPad.
I am aware of that.
Oh, okay, just making sure.
But if you'd like me to appear...
I just want to make sure it's actually you speaking to us.
Well, I wasn't aware, I had turned, I had...
I had a feeling.
I'm back, I am back.
Well, we wanted to see your face.
Yeah, I'm sure. Mr. Jermaine, comments, questions?
Not at this time, I think it makes some sense, it's a reasonable compromise based on where we're at at this time, I'm not a big advocate right now of putting that money into stabilization, I think we'll wait until the spring town meeting and see where we stand at that time, so, I like the idea of a little bit of cushion, it's small, but it's there nonetheless.
And I would, Mr. Chairman, I would actually, I would second that, I would support waiting till the spring to determine where we are from a financial perspective, to determine whether the funds are available, to put in the stabilization based upon what the state does with its budget and our local aid for FY '22.
Yeah, well, I mean, we do have a state budget that is still proposed, we know it's proposed at the, what the levels were for 2020, and hopefully that will hold up as opposed to the legislative, though it's not like we're out of the woods yet, but I think this is a reasonable approach based upon the feedback from the school committee and some of the members of the finance committee as well. So, the spreadsheet then gives us the explanation as to how we see the new Article 2, right?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yes.
Look at Article 2, it actually includes the first six columns of the chart, the last two, the last one of the chart is really for the board's reference as well as the revenue summaries, and obviously, the finance committee will have those as well, and, you know, it'll be up to them to determine how much they want to put in the flyer, but for the purposes of the article, you can see the first six, six columns.
Yeah, well, I guess that, I think that I can certainly support this as it stands, I just want to also go on record a couple of things, one of the reasons that we, you know, originally had proposed a little different treatment is we're not, we were not looking to make a permanent commitment to this level. is we're not, we were not looking to make a permanent commitment to this level of expenditure in the budget. And I'm just, I'm going to call on particularly the $10,000 for the rec department. I'm not committing tonight that that money automatically becomes the current budget which we build upon. That still has to be justified as far as I'm concerned when we look at the budgeting for fiscal '22 because we're doing this as an emergency step. Now, I'm not committing to the other members of the board one way or the other, but I think that these things we need to get done. I think that, I think it's reasonable, but I'm not committing that these automatically get folded into the budget as the starting point for 2022. Okay, so what you're looking for us to do then, assuming that the members of the board are comfortable with the new proposal, would be to reopen the warrant and start the new Article 2?
Mr. Chairman, I would be recommending that the board vote to make the changes to Article 2 as presented and to vote to remove Article 7, which is the article for the salary survey, since those funds have been moved to Article 2.
I think we need to open the.
Yeah, so I would ask that we, I got a motion that we reopen the warrant for the November 7th town meeting.
I move that we reopen the warrant for the November 7th town meeting.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to reopen the warrant. I'll hold board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
So reopen the warrant. And so what we're looking to do then is to substitute the language for the new Article 2 to eliminate the original Article 7 and then to renumber the subsequent articles accordingly. I think that's.
I'll second that.
That's basically what we're doing. So we'll have nine articles instead of 10. So it's been moved and seconded. I'll hold the board for the reissuance of the amended warrant. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And the motion is carried unanimously. All right, so I would ask that we provide this revised warrant tomorrow, if possible, to, certainly to the finance committee and the school committee so they can see what the new proposal is. And then we'll go from there. I want to thank everybody for participating, by the way, in the meeting last Wednesday. I think it was, you know, a good meeting and a good conversation. Hopefully this compromise is one that we can all support and I hope that we'll be able to gain that support from the finance committee and the school committee as well.
Mr. Zizinski, does the board need to re-sign the warrant?
We close the warrant?
Yes.
I move that we re-close the warrant for November 7th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the warrant. I'll hold the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. So one last crack at it, right? This is it.
This is it, this is it.
We just made it, just made it in time. Okay. The next item we have on our agenda is a rule of conflict of interest request, disclosure. Actually, it's a disclosure from the building commissioner, Mr. Zizinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, in your packet is a disclosure document from the building commissioner. Mr. James Pietro is putting forward this disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest as required by general law, Chapter 268A, Section 23, Subsection D, Subsection 3. Just notifying the board that he and his spouse have purchased a lot at 121 Orchard Street to construct a single-family dwelling unit for their use. And a building official chosen by the board will view the application to build and do the inspections for all Massachusetts regulations under their authorization. And I am recommending that Mr. Fogarty, our new local inspector, recommending that the board approve Mr. Fogarty to take on that role for this project.
Any questions from the board?
No questions for me.
I'm assuming that the purchases for his own building.
Yes, it's for his own use.
Yeah, so he can.
His own use, okay.
And I would just ask the board to vote to accept the document and for the file.
I'd move that we also designate.
Designate Bob Fogarty, right?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Jermaine, make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve acceptance of this disclosure document. And what was the other piece that you had?
To designate Mr. Fogarty, our new local inspector, as the inspector, an official, town official in charge of the overseeing of the project.
And I'll include that wording in my motion.
All of the above.
Second.
All of the above, yes.
So it's been moved and seconded, I'll hold the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, and I want to thank the building commissioner for stepping forward as he's supposed to do. That's appreciated.
Thank you.
He's on, in case you didn't notice.
Oh.
Good luck.
Thank you. I'll be paying taxes shortly.
That'll be good. It's good for you. Pay in advance if you'd like.
If I had the lottery, I will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Next item on our agenda is a water sewer commitment.
Indeed.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in your packet is the water and sewer commitment for September of a total of $2,172.89.
Okay, so take a motion from the board?
Is it to approve?
Yeah, for September 2020.
I move that we approve the water sewer department commitment for September 2020 in the amount of $2,172.89.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the water sewer commitment for September 2020 in the amount of $2,172.89. I'll hold the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I understand that there's got to be some adjustment to the stormwater commitment, is that correct? So we're going to defer that?
Yes.
Correct, the treasurer has asked that be deferred at this point.
Okay. So that's the thing, that's the end of the agenda. I'd like to talk a little bit about meeting schedule. I think that at this point, we have scheduled a meeting for October 26th. And then we have one scheduled for November 7th, I'm sorry, 2nd, which is the Monday before Election Day. We're having a town meeting, as you know, hopefully on November 7th. So I think it's prudent for us to schedule perhaps a meeting later that week. We never know where their items might come up. Occasionally, there are in fact last-minute changes that have to be made, recommendations, et cetera. Certainly things that have to be reacted to. So I would ask the board members, if they're available, for a meeting on Thursday.
11:05?
We could do it at 5:00 earlier, whatever meets your needs.
I'm free for whenever.
This is the fifth we're talking about?
Yes.
Yep.
Give me just a second, please, I apologize.
Meeting.
All right, just have to see what I've got going. Yep.
In the meantime, I was just curious for, I know a town meeting, given that it's going to be different, obviously, and outside and so forth, and that we have, you know, a rain plan for that. It sounds like a lot of people aren't really aware that it is planned yet for the 7th. Is there a way we can start pushing that information?
Well, certainly we can put up the copy of the warrant online tomorrow. And obviously, the finance committee will be going through its work on Wednesday. And I know they'll be sending out a flyer to every household. We could certainly find some other creative ways to inform the public, you know, beyond, and, you know, obviously, you can use the Facebook post as well, so.
Yeah, that would be good, especially since it's just so different this year, you know, just to get it out sooner.
Mr. Chair, just to add in response to Erin, the only reason it hasn't been posted is I was waiting for the final version of it, and I like to sign the fully executed copy, which is also signed by the constable. So that will happen later this week, so we can post that on the website at that point, unless you want me to post it sooner. And we typically send out a postcard, I don't know, usually you get these giant pink or bright yellow postcards, so I'll definitely work on sending that out to advertise as well, so everyone should get that in their mailbox, and we can put it on Facebook, like Mike said, so.
Yeah, I would think if I were to make a suggestion.
Right, the final something.
Yeah, that all makes sense. I think just because this year is so different, my suggestion would be to just post something about the date, location, and time on the town Facebook page. And then when finalized, you know, share the warrant, you know, I don't see a rush for that part yet. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's right, we should use that technique and the website as well, even if we have to post it a few days before the warrant's actually signed. I mean, it's important for people to understand what's coming.
And you're right.
And it's so different, and it's so different that we need to keep reminding folks. So Thursday, is that okay, Thursday the 5th, Pete?
Yes, I've just blocked it in, I do have it at 5:00 PM.
Yeah.
And then may I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Do we want to meet just prior to the town meeting?
The next meeting will be Saturday at 11:00 AM.
Okay.
Okay. You're one step ahead of me.
Do we want to meet indoors or somewhere? How do you want to do that?
I've recommended that the board could meet outside, right at the location where you'll be sitting for the fall town meeting, if you'd like to do that. That location, we can make sure is available for public access by 11:00 AM. And you could have a meeting that way without having to do the Zoom, that's up to the board, whether you want to try to do a Zoom meeting, you know, somewhere else beforehand. It's questionable now whether or not, you know, really that's there just in case, you know, issues come up. Usually that meeting, what happens is, is it might be a five-minute meeting and then it goes into recess just to see if the board needs to take any formal action during the town meeting. So I would recommend for simplicity that the board hold it right at the location of the town meeting.
If I'm not mistaken, will this not be the first time that the three of us will actually see each other together?
It could be, or all of us, right?
Yeah.
Frightening, huh?
We'll have our masks and our woolly winter hats on, but that's okay.
Snow shovels at the ready.
Could be.
I will bring my, yeah, corduroy tie, so it's a little warmer.
I'd like to see that.
I don't have one of them, don't have one of them.
I might take up sewing just so I can make one.
Yeah, there you go.
So we will post for Saturday at 11:00 AM at the middle school, high school. And again, the reason for doing the 5th and the 7th is really to protect us in case we have to meet. So if in fact there's no reason to meet on Thursday because we completed all our work on Monday, that's fine too. The only thing we can't do, of course, is have something come up. If we don't have a meeting posted, then it's very complicated. Okay, so then the meeting schedule will be, we will meet on the 26th. We will meet on the 2nd. We will have a scheduled meeting for the 5th at 5:00 PM.
The 7th.
We will have a scheduled meeting for 11:00 AM on the 7th of November. And then we will have regular meetings on the Monday, the 16th and Monday, the 30th. Just as an aside, based upon our commitment, we will be looking toward something the week after town meeting, the week of the 16th, to try and schedule the stormwater abatement hearings. We'd like to get that completed, it's, I think, too close to us trying to scramble around before town meeting, but we would like to get that done hopefully by the end, you know, by mid-November if possible. Mid to late, before Thanksgiving, how about that?
Yes, prior to the holidays would be good. Whatever the holidays will mean this year, but nonetheless.
Those will probably be Zoom meetings, though.
Yes, we will eat turkey with the family on Zoom.
All right, so any other business, nothing we have in front of us, I'd take a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn?
I'll second.
I move in second at the board meeting, adjourn, I'll hold the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Oh, no. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes. I didn't think I had to, I've already spoken for it.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
All right, before we actually sign off, thanks everyone for participating, we really appreciate it. Carol as well, and Mike, and Karen, and all the others. I think it was certainly a meeting, hopefully, that the citizens found useful. So with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Good night.